We call the January 15th meeting of Cape Charles Town Council to order please. Roll call. Brad, you're present.
Ben is present.
Ben is present.
Natalie is present.
We have a form. Let the record show that the mayor, councilman, and window are not present. We have a form. It stands for the invocation. There'll be a moment of silence and then we will begin.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, and every being has a right to our own.
Recognition of visitors and presentations. I believe the order, it's Dick says, I accuse him of being a lawyer, but he is more important than any lawyer that comes to town.
Thank you. My brokerage is clever, for religion, honor, come before you tonight to present the, it is the 2013 Water Foundation Quality Award as acted by the CDC, but they pass it through the Department of Health to offer the drinking water for the annual presentation. This is not exactly a bill award, luckily, Cape Charles has gotten many of them. Criteria for the award, though, to know that they don't do it out too lightly. Monitoring the daily four-odd levels of the lease of plants ensures at least within seven to five days of the month, then the average is .8 and 1.4 parts per day. And no more than 20% of the daily find exceed that range. They also do a monthly split sample with certified lab to make sure that their instrumentation is correct. So how further ado, I would like to present this to your designated operator to our committee.
Thank you. Start. One more time.
Well, from smudging.
And our next, thanks for what you've done for the town of the vessel. Our next guest is Carrie Allison with the East Shore Virginia Tourism Commission, a very important part of the vitality of Cape Charles.
Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Great. My name is Carrie Allison. I'm the executive director of the East Shore Tourism Commission, which is a regional closer, which is a regional organization formed, I don't know, 15, 20, 10 years ago, it's gone through some permutations. I started there in October 2013, and I want to thank the team of Cape Charles for their financial support of our efforts. And I'm here tonight so that you have a better understanding of what that money and investment has bought you as well as the region. And I prepared a slide show, I'm going to put it really fast because there's a lot of data in it, and I don't want to get stuck in that. I have copies here. I am going to, I do need to go through some of that so you can understand our rationale and the reason we're doing what we're doing. This is our marketing baseline. When you design marketing, particularly, you start with what you know about the market. We're not big enough to sanction big research studies, but some of this is obvious and easy to find. We're using the state numbers. That's really the people that have the big research dollars, and so we lean on them. We have three and a half million crossers across the Bay Bridge every year. We know that 90% of travelers plan online. We know that 52% rely on their own experience and networking with friends and family in order to inform their travel decisions, which is very important, that red flag, social media, because Facebook is very important, is all social media channels. Pinterest is one of the fastest-growing social media channels for travel and leisure. Images are key to travel and leisure, and a mobile platform is essential. And please tell me at any time if you have any questions. We know that our key product areas, and I do need to point out that this is VTC, the state folks, this is their data, and we're thrown in with Virginia Beach. I'm trying to get them to do a research platform, it's just for the eastern shore because we're so different, but it does give us some general directions. History is top, outdoors nature, shopping, beach, and dining wine. Now, we have space, nobody else does, and they don't research for that. And we have an Artisan Trail, which is going live in this year, and we're having an oyster trail. The governor branded the Virginia oyster last summer, and we've already kind of launched an optimized landing page and began to market that. I'm on the management team for both Artisan Trail and Virginia Oyster Trail, and those are huge programs that give us a marketing platform with a brochure that's distributed statewide, and a ready-to-go website with great mapping features, and that's going to really benefit us. Our key demographics, we know, are 45 to 64. Next, we have the middle demographic, 25 to 44. We want to focus on growing that 25 to 44 because those are the people coming along, and they're the key to outdoor, a lot of the outdoor activities we want to build on. They're very, very particular about eating organic produce, millennials, all that, and we're beginning to be able to appeal to those people, I know from the data on the website. The key demographic on the website is young men, 24 to 35, of course, because they want to come here and, you know, take advantage of all the fun out for adventures. Okay? The travel origin, this is very important, and this is really a driver in the way we target market into these dry markets. Number one is in state Virginia, number two Pennsylvania, number three North Carolina, which surprised me when I saw it, and then New York and New Jersey. So the reason we want to, we have to know these things is because when we're doing digital marketing targeting, we can target right into the state markets. So we have the data, then we say, what are we going to do? Our strategy is a deep digital presence. Our new markets and products are multi-generational travel. We want to expand the 25 to 44, girlfriend getaways, culinary arts. I'm going to add oysters to that, but that's kind of under the culinary umbrella, but it is more oyster-focused. We want to support partnership foundation, and we want to grow the shoulder season. We don't want to close up after the summer months. I went up to have Chica Te, I went to Chica Te to have lunch the other day, two restaurants opened in the whole town. So we want to really develop our packages, deals, and itineraries because the media loves that and the consumers love it. Some busy couple in DC does not have time to get on our website and do all the research, figure out how to set up a kayak whiner tour or even know about it, so we have to give them sort of, you know, some kind of vision for what they can do. And we want better, more engaging information. When you go to our website, it's just a bunch of lists. So we want to do interactive maps, itineraries, top-tier events. We've already produced some short videos, we started Pinterest board, and we want to have all these itineraries, all that, there's going to all be build-outs on the website that we can link to them from everywhere. So at the tactical level, we're going to, we're really focusing on content marketing. We're writing a lot of new content. I switched the organization around. We have, we had a full-time admin, we jobbed out some of that, and we hired a half-time content producer who's a writer, and she started the Pinterest board, she's a social media person, and she's a great photographer. So we're going to get those images we need in order to push the market. We developed a new consumer email, we have new social media channels, we now have four. We have Instagram, which allows, it's very popular among millennials as is Pinterest. We're really pushing out top events and itineraries. We pushed out a fall oyster roast marketing program last, last fall that did really well. We pushed it in all the dry markets, and we have people here from New Jersey and all over. We're leveraging the Artisans Trail, Virginia Oyster Trail, and we're doing target marketing. VTC, the state people, give us co-op buys. We have very little money for direct marketing. You know, it's less than 20,000. And people like TripAdvisor, you can't even get in and play the game until you have 15,000. So VTC allows us to, they buy big, 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 they buy down prices, do big media buys. We're going to do some co-op, we're doing Facebook posts, we're doing Facebook PPC, which is good because you're only paying when people cook on the end. We're really waiting for Pinterest, they're going to monetize our whole website. We're measuring everything that we do by year tax revenue increases that we get, those numbers are from the state, and that's our bed tax. I call it bed tax, I think y'all call it the transient occupancy tax, but that's how we know how we're doing, if that grows. We've grown since 2008 in a very steady way, and last year we were the highest grossing, I mean, the highest increase of the whole state, our market was. And so we measure that every year, we go, oh, we're directionally correct, we're doing something right, or we're accidentally doing well. What we're going to do in between that, because we need more information so we can, of course, correct, is we're measuring key performance indicators quarterly. So those are what I call KPIs. And there are signals of intent to travel. The website visits, which are up 48% 2014 over 2013. Social media engagement is not just how many likes you have or adding a lot of those, it's how many people share your stuff off Facebook, it's how many people share and repin your Pinterest elements. Our guide orders are up 20%, our newsletter sign-ups are 1,500 since September. Our new website visitors, you want a lot of new people, you're reaching new people, if those numbers are good, and ours are good. And then if you stay on website, if you go to somebody's website and start to look for a hotel or a B&amp;B, some place to stay, you're pretty strongly saying, I'm planning my trip. And that's putting on top five page for six months, that's just when I start tracking that. And our, we're measuring both our social media and then the big mainstream media. I call it the mainstream media, that's Washington Post, all the things that we think about. We're measuring engagement across our social media channels. And then we're measuring the mainstream media, we're just looking at how many big stories we get in the mainstream media, but there's tons of blogs now. We got a hit in this place called, this blog called The Daily Meal, and I thought, oh, that's a little product thing, they were here, and, you know, I looked up and they have like 30 million people a month. So we're paying more and more attention to bloggers, and when we get a really substantial media, we're trying to do their actual earned media value. That Washington Post article, I added it all up because we got the front page of travel, it was worth, the whole thing was worth like 60 grand. And then, you know, Virginia Living, we're on the front cover of that last summer, then we have a bunch of internal stuff. We, it's just priceless what that earns us. And it's real important, but we're looking at, we're going to the second-tier bloggers and paying a lot more attention to them. VTC is the big driver in that, they help us the most because they have all these distribution lists, we don't have those. It would take almost a half-time person just to keep up our list because the reporters and the journalists churn so much. We have an industry program. We want marketing plan visibility, that's why I'm here, because we want you all to know what we're doing so that we can all cooperate. I've been working with people across the whole region, post Facebook, don't put people on your Facebook, don't put maps on there, don't put posters, just put great images and then we'll share them. And as more and more people are getting with that program, then we're creating some synergy there, and we can lift the market as a whole. We're doing an industry email once a quarter. I put that in the slide, I'm starting to back out of that because nobody's opening those emails. And so what we might do instead is take a page off of the Artisan Trail, the executive director there, they do emails, a lot of people ignore them, but they have a very active Facebook presence, and that we would keep all of our industry partners in the loop on that Facebook page. And over time, we hope that that would be sort of a forum for sharing, like, hey, I have a wine shop and I want to do a tasting, can anybody, you know, some kind of collaborative businesses coming together to do things and let people know on that Facebook page. We're still kicking that idea around, but we need a forum. We need people on Chica Teak and On the Cock and Cape Charles and Washington Beach to all start collaborating more as businesses, much like the kayak whiner tour. We're holding an annual tourism summit, we did our first one last year, we're holding another one April 7th, and we've just kind of been able to Shanghai Google to come and give a keynote speech. And the only reason we're able to do that is because the guy has a second house in On the Cock, so we just got really lucky. We're doing the dashboard, we want to show you every quarter our industry, including all of our stakeholders or investors, what we're doing as we go, and we'll correct course we go, and then we're going to do a strategic planning session, a strategic plan. It was a place when I got to the tourism summit, the tourism commission was, you know, kind of a tweak, but it was about six or seven years old. And we're going to have Bobby Walker, she's the VTC rep that lives here in Cape Charles, is going to walk us through that. We're not sure, we wanted to do it, you know, this month or next month. It's such a huge undertaking, we've got to get some other things out of the way. Our major, this is not in the slide, because I assume everybody knows it, but I'm going to remind everybody that our major efforts are the visitor guide, we print 150,000 to state them all through the state of Virginia and to all the ports. We're going to be expanding that into more triplane markets because it's free, and maybe even tagging on with Chica Teak, they have a lot more money than we do, but to try to get involved with some of their distribution points and add those over time as we have increased revenue. We also manage the website and all those social media channels, but we also, of course, have the welcome center, and I know from the research that's been done that it sends a lot of business to Cape Charles as well as all the way up the shore. Does anybody have any questions or ideas or comments or things that I didn't bring up that you wish I would or?
I think you've done a great job. This is my second time seeing the presentation, so it's locked up pretty good.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay, yeah, I did memorize it by now. Well, thank you very much for that feedback. Thank you very much, and again, we, oh, I'm sorry.
I think you've done a great, you've done a great job on the shore because our shore was in years exploded in the past five years. I mean, you're 27.
Well, there's lots of people that have been working sustainably. You know, that's Donna Bose and Dave Schulte, and it's that long-term effort that you have to put in over many years, and I think you're seeing the results of a lot of people's work over many, many, many years. Great work from the board go. And I'm walking in here kind of taking credit for it, and I'm not at all, but I think we've got five to eight years of real hard development work to do with the Artisan Trail, the Oyster Trail, all the exciting things that are happening. And we're going to be, we're talking about some of those things at the community strategic planning session, and some of you will be invited to that. I'll be reaching out to the town to find out who you think ought to be invited. But I think we need to talk about some of those, I'm really just marketing. I put a wall up between me and what we can do with our tiny staff, and you're doing a great job of marketing and getting those numbers where we want them, because when those numbers go up, investors get more interested. They're looking for ROI, and they're looking for, what do you know, what's your data? So that's why I'm so focused on that, so that we can kind of pave the way for being a better investment when that money comes along. The governor, I just read this morning, made us some kind of enterprise zone. I'm working with Charles McSwain, we're talking about a tourism zone, but it still requires private investment, and people aren't going to take that risk, you know, the big guns, until they know it's going to be a big return. So that's a whole other effort that I'm kind of leaving to the state and the economic development directors because I can't focus on it and do all this right. So just to let you know, that is kind of a change in the way that we're looking at our mission.
Carrie, I have a question for you. One of your slides indicated that you call out top events and you focus on probably social media, we didn't get those out. How do you do that?
How do we?
What do you talk to?
You mean to find out what the top events are?
How do you figure out what's a top event?
Well, I'll give you a good example. We have, we're focused on the things where we're tying into the bigger things going on the market, like the arts, because we have their Artisan Trail, and people love to plan trip around festivals, so it's going to be focused on those two things, and we've already rolled out, we focus on all those oyster events.
Well, let me get a little bit more specific.
Okay.
So, for example, is this a new initiative or did you do this last year?
The oyster?
No, no, the top events.
We have, we're just now thinking about it, we're just putting that in place. But we start, well, I mean, we're, we've already isolated the oyster roast as top events, and because it was regional, they're all over the shore.
Oh, yeah, even more specific.
Okay.
We do tall ships in Cape Charles.
Right, right.
And a top event?
Yes, we push it out on Facebook big time, and we push out Harbor for the Arts big time. We're looking for anything that has, in order to push it out on Facebook, we pretty much need good pictures.
How do you find them?
They're on our website.
Okay, so right now you're relying for individual program sponsors to come to you.
No, everybody across the shore knows to go put their call up, Allen Burns, the Welcome Center, and we have a very comprehensive events calendar. And I look at it every Monday morning, go, what's going on this weekend, and I can push out. Then the other-
But still kind of a, there's no, there's no real-
There's not a top 10 list of events, and I've thought about doing that, and I think I should have taken it out of the presentation, because we don't, we're not ready yet to do that on shore. Bigger markets routinely do it, because they know all boats rise, but it's a political nightmare for us right now, so we're not going to go there. But we are looking at the events that we can put, that we can build a regional, a regional presence, so that is a qualifying factor. When you're asking, what's a criteria for what we talk about? Honestly, it is, doesn't have big appeal enough to bring people from all those dry markets in, and we saw oyster roasts definitely have big appeal. We know culinary, any cultural thing, the arts, any, anything that's linked to culture will bring people from offshore because it's distinctive and unique to the area. So we, we push the heck out of, and I'm always bugging everybody down here, give your harvest, you know, take harvest images of Harbor for the Arts and take harvest images of tall ships. And I sent our photographer up and down the shore, all the oyster roasts, to make sure that we had harvest images to push out for next year, so we're really building that image library, because you can't do anything without harvest images. So Chris is one of my best friends, I'm bugging him right now for, give me those aerial shots of the, you know, the tall ships. So anyway, we're working routinely with everybody, Chica Teak, and anybody that does anything, we're on it. And if we think it has appeal and there's good image attached to it, sometimes we can't promote something on social media because it doesn't have the image, so.
Any other questions?
Actually, I have another question. One of the key indicators that you say that you monitor is the occupancy taxes, we call it. Is there any plans or any projection on trying to get those numbers back to the originating entities sooner? It seems like it takes a year and a half to get the information back.
That's something we rely on the state bureaucracy for, and last year I think I got them in May, and we sent out a press release and we sent out locally, there's no way to hurry that up. It just takes them a while to crunch all those numbers. They have one gallon at the state, they cut all their staff. You know how that goes. So we get the, we pass it on to the public and to our archives as soon as we get it and we release it to everybody.
Can you make a point of making sure that you pass the details back to the town?
Sure, sure, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, sure. And do let me mention that at the town level, anybody can go online and look at that data. It's at the state level, and it's free and open to the public, and anybody can jump on there. So you can go and access it, the town level can go on there and look, and as soon as they release the data, that website is released, I mean, it's updated online, so, yeah, I'd be glad to pass it on. Sure.
Anything else? Thank you very much. You've done a great job. Eastern Shore Tourism Commission is really helping everybody on its own way up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for your time, and please don't, don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions and have anything, any great ideas like that, so we can all just get more and more cohesive and integrated, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. First, I'd like to apologize for what you may have just had to be, hopefully this won't happen again. Public comment, do you have any? Public comment?
Thank you. Next, we might want to set agenda, move on to motion, approve the agenda comment. So I'm going to call in favor. I have the agenda is approved. I have a motion to approve the events. So I'm going to call in favor. All right, next we go one to the chair.
Mr. Mayor, I think you need to just make him mention that you are back in the seat instead of our vice mayor being in the corner.
I will do that.
He did an accent toward here.
Let the record show that the mayor is present.
Cash position. Total cash on candidates at the end of December was $1,902,209. That's an increase of $705,000 over the last month due to inflow of tax payments. The total restricted reserve cash was $1,365,691. It brings the total cash on all accounts as of December 31st to $32,267,900. There are one debt service payment due in January for $26,963, and one for $155,438 in debts due in early February. Those are for the 2006 and 2010 B and L bank accounts. Any questions on cash? Page two, which is current fiscal year fund balance as of the end of December. The general fund shows year-to-date revenue of $1.895 million, year-to-date expenses of $1.16 million for a net balance of $789,000. Public utilities fund shows year-to-date revenue of $858,000 and year-to-date expenses of $747,000 for a net balance of $111,000. Harbor fund has year-to-date revenue of $513,000 and year-to-date expenses of $541,500 for a net balance of negative $28,000. Sanitation fund has year-to-date revenue of $89,000 and year-to-date expenses of $69,500 for a net balance of $19,000. Any questions? Capital projects. Finance department disburse $48,148 for capital expenditures in December. $34,574 of that amount was for public works, new truck. $10,665 was for the wells. $2,354 went toward the trail project, and there were small expenditures for the Pine Street parking lot and civic center equipment. To date, we're at 6% of budget completion for our planned capital projects. Any questions?
What's the projection for the rest of the year?
It depends on the project. A lot of them are in works, the other is utility truck. Pete's working on, he's going to get refit, he's going to do some marketing, that one's on the way, projects, the other part we mentioned, parking dress.
It's looking like we're playing a bit under span.
We are, well, a lot of that money is for trail. And that's in the works.
Yeah, it's dominated by the trail. We just got, we've been waiting for VDA approval to bid a project. The last piece finally came in today, which was approved, our use of proprietary lighting and benches to match those in the park, so they're requesting approval bid from the Federal Highway Administration, so hopefully we will, I keep saying that every month, VDA-
The phone system as well, because people are working on that, so we're ready to start the phone system. Page four, collection statistics. As of the end of December, we've collected 92% of the budgeted real estate tax revenue per year. For 2014, personal property license and machinery tools taxes, we've collected 78% of the budget. For prior year, all property tax interest and penalty collections, in fiscal year 15, we were at 91% as of the end of December. Oh, the past due, the Dylan what tax bills will go out next week. Oh, the, um, past due, the Dylan what tax bills will go out next week, so. Page five, the three-year revenue comparison. To follow on last month's report, I told you that we got additional sales and lease tax income from the county postpart. Finally, I'd heard from them, and it was told that that additional payment was due to an audit under records. Nineteen thousand of it was from fiscal year fourteen sales, and the remainder was for this year. So we are on schedule, on budget with that. The total we see was twenty-three thousand. Meal tax figures show that eighty-seven thousand more restaurant revenue was earned this fiscal year over last year, just to date. Just good news. Um, admissions taxes are showing a small decline there, that's primarily the golf course. The rest of the taxes are steady or have small increases. This year, we had quite a hike, real estate taxes at this time of year, collection over last year. I really believe we did a lot of pre-work on the tax file data, such as researching and correcting addresses and other names, before we sent out the first bill, and I think that really helped us get early collection on that. The staff did a good job on that. Any questions, Will?
You can't see the T O T, the movements ahead of last year.
Yep.
Before the increase, the rate increase.
Right. You don't ask you this, but, uh, about where are we with the telephone? The new call system?
I'm not sure exactly when it's going to be delivered.
It's been questioned the last month.
Um, I am still working on these future accommodations on the, uh, cancellation clause. Hopefully, we'll work something out.
Any questions?
Any other questions? All right, none? Okay, um, I'll have a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
After that?
After that. All in favor?
Right.
Treasurer's report is approved, after that. Uh, let's go to the planning commission.
Okay, uh, planning commission, um, I think everybody knows that we have hired a new planner, Mr. Lawrence DeRee. Uh, I think George Uden, on Monday, I'm not sure who was able to meet any other council people. Uh, I believe he did attend the planning commission meeting, uh, on the-
Yes.
Well, you were, yeah, Jones had to-
I was in here.
Uh, so he did meet the planning commissioners. And he will start February second. Uh, the, speaking of the planning commission, uh, they are working their way through the COF plan, and, uh, we, the plan there will be to hold a joint work session with council, so that the planning commission can explain the highlights of the update. We'll have to schedule that. Uh, we did mention that, it wasn't in the report last month, but we mentioned that the Historic District Review Board did approve the plans for the North Hampton Hotel, uh, re-adultation. And, uh, we did, uh, hold a board zoning appeals meeting for the, um, bulkheadings. And that's a kind of a strong term, it's, it's gonna be driven into the dune line. Uh, really done, exposed, uh, on, uh, holes four and five of the Nicholas Golf Course to, um, prevent, uh, or at least deter further erosion in that area. And the B Z A did grant that exception to the zoning ordinance for that. So that's it on the planning commission.
Questions, guys? Frank, what's the one to approve?
Looking at that, was, uh, monthly, I've been meeting, um, as part of the, uh, Future Shore Hazard Mitigation Committee. Uh, this plan is a, a regional plan that FEMA kind of requires localities to participate in in order to be eligible for funding, future funding through FEMA. Uh, I sat over the last time, and so, they do it every five years, but this isn't gonna be like a complete total rewrite, as opposed to last time, it's just like a renewal from the plan before. So, uh, we meet once a month, it's a community college for different hours. Um, and it'll be a year and a half or so before it's kind of finalized. You know, mainly talking about subjects we're all familiar with, stormwater flooding, coastal erosion, and then there's other things like sea level rise that they're getting really bumped up on and stuff like that. So it's just basically a plan to put in place, and each locality will have its own section. We had one last time, if any of you guys are interested in looking at the plan, I think it's online, the last time. And, um, Cape Charles has its own chapter, and we'll have to rewrite that again. But, uh, this is, uh, the Accom MacArthur Hampton Planning District Commission is the one who, uh, oversees it and writes it, writes the plan, and we just participate, basically, so.
Questions?
Questions?
Honors, go ahead. I guess this is, I feel something happened. Well, I was looking at the lift station or pump station there by the, um, the old goo, you know? The problem, anything?
Uh, they had, they had an issue going on with, uh, I think, clogging, clogged up.
Pretty little clog in there. Yeah, and then pumps didn't wanna start working again, but we gotta all think that.
Do you have a live being break on Randall, on, uh, Randolph? Is that what that was?
Uh, there, there was a valve that, uh-
Jim, what's the main, uh, cause of so much more enforcement this, this year versus last year?
You mean the collect, the collective?
Correct, yeah.
Um, property, well, people, generally, when I move or ask some stuff, people don't pay. Uh, the only time I usually get my money is when a property sells. So that tells me that there's been a lot of properties that have changed hands, and we're going for people who probably have backed taxes, backed utilities, and could enforcement to wiping the slate clean, and now being a, a taxpayer, paying your utility bills and maintaining the property.
Okay.
And, uh, hopefully.
So, so far this year, this was, uh, four million dollars in construction, that's for fiscal-
Fiscal year from July to December.
So do we have any idea how much that represents in property taxes? Because not all of that is new construction. A lot of it is gonna be renovating and so forth.
Right, but I mean, they, they, they collect permits for me, not just for new construction, but anything substantial alteration, like an addition, um, you know, making a bathroom bigger, making a kitchen bigger, they wanna see all that stuff. But as far as dollar figure, I, I really don't know how they compute all that. It's substantial, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I've always assumed that, that on a mirror, I, that my assumptions are right or really off track. Um, that on the right side column, the total permit fees last fiscal year, was what, the entire year?
Fiscal year, July, June. I do, I do everything in fiscal year.
Okay, so, the fact that last year in total, we collected ninety-five thousand plus in permit fees, and this year, at six months, we've collected a hundred and thirty, almost a hundred and thirty-one thousand in, in permit fees. That, that's a great indicator to me, that there really is stuff going on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, uh, Bay Creek has a, what's called a Builders Guild, where they, um, they have all their preferred builders, their architects, and they have, they have meetings, and they invited me to the one they had, uh, last week. And they are very excited to potentially do big things this year. They've got a bigger marketing budget, um, that they can do more shows, they can do more newspaper articles, videos. Um, they're very hopeful to, uh, double what they did last year. So. Is that it?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, all right.
Harvard. Oh, okay. Oh, I got, oh, I got a couple of things. One, um, the Bourne's Memorial, I did speak with that Bruce, uh, earlier this week. I'm a single rapper act, uh, and he is hoping to, uh, to, like Ryan was starting to set, building the firms, uh, firms to, uh, hopefully, bring the library to us in there. Uh, and he'd be, he'd like to have, uh, something else back by the end of March. Uh, he's had some trouble getting some, some key things together, uh, but he's working on, working on that, and he's working for, uh, starting up in other directions. Uh, the other thing I'd like to add, uh, earlier this week, uh, I was asked, uh, I was contacted by Williams, uh, by Hans Smith from Williams. The William and Mary is having a, uh, water, uh, working waterfront, uh, in Richmond, um, January the twenty-ninth. Uh, as some of you may or may not know, working waterfronts in Virginia is, is getting few and far between. Uh, and William and Mary would like for me to sit in on that meeting, uh, so.
When is that meeting, please?
Uh, William and Mary is, is putting together, uh, the swap's is-
When is?
Is January the twenty-ninth. Uh, and so I, today, I set up all my information, and they're, I'm having trouble on everything to come out and send it in, so. And that's about it. Any questions?
Yeah, you can tell the people, like, a lot of capitalists are joining.
Uh, yeah. The other capitalists are, is kind of a little secret about, again, for coming back and forth throughout the next, uh-
Summer week.
Uh, that was something, maybe.
Summer week.
For, for whatever it is they're doing.
Uh, here we go. Don't make it later, hey, I have big guns on, probably.
He's made great comments on dropping the crap pot on your Facebook, on your Facebook page. Everybody loves it.
Why don't you say something about the dropping crap pot?
Well, uh, uh, dropping the crap pot, uh, it was well attended. I think it was, uh, way better than I, at the point. I was a little upset, I've, uh, I kind of had to call his room, he used to rest it, and I come out, and I work on it, it's just like people. I was kind of shocked, uh, a lot of people, I, I think it was like five hundred people, uh, there, uh, they kind of walk the streets, or something, uh, but as of, uh, come out, wrote this, uh, a road report, uh, video, I posted a video, uh, on Facebook. I had, I take a video with my phone, uh, posted on Facebook, and I did this report, it was, uh, that video I've been seeing over about a thousand times. So it's, uh, and it's a lot of people, uh, a lot of excitement to do it again next year. Uh, and I think we got the pop, got all the hard stuff done, and I was just rather proud of it.
I didn't, but.
Anyway.
I didn't have, I had a lot of people come up and tell me how, how much they'd liked it. I, I didn't hear a single meaningful comment, I heard all kinds of good things about it, so.
It was fun, yeah, it was, it was fun, it was, it was, uh, I think, uh, uh, I think it was, it was, I think it kind of fooled everybody, I don't think they were expecting something as big as what they got. Uh, I had a lot of comments, like, I was expecting the crap pot, and so, it's, it's tall, and so, but it is pretty cool.
It's deep, cold.
Deep, cold? Oh, you're negative, negative goddamn first one.
Thank you. And library?
I don't really have anything to add, but I just wanna say that it seems like every week there are people coming to the library to get library cards, or they are moving here, or they've moved here, or else they're thinking about moving here, like they're trying to find a place to live, or, so it, it's definitely a lot of growth going on. And, um, we had, even though with this horrible weather, we had eleven kids in our toddler story time today, and we had twelve in our preschool story time, and one day last week, I think we had like seventy-five people in the library. I mean, we've had days where we only had like fifteen too, but it's a lot of, you know, a lot of action going on for this time of year, so things are going well. Any questions?
Thank you. Jim, please.
I don't have anything else to add. So, the day, gentlemen, some of Bay Creek people, uh, what we can do over there? That's January thirty-first, ten o'clock, uh, I'm not sure of the location yet, they, they're here. That's about it. Other than that, it's, uh, cold out.
So all these things in that, uh, dropping the crap pot, will you get busy afterwards?
I'm gonna be gone ten hours, I'm asleep.
So, I, I guess the answer to that is no.
No.
So you've been with us, you've been chief now one year, right?
Yes.
Congratulations, you've done a nice, nice, nice job, difficult circumstances, a lot of tough things to take care of in that time, so, uh.
I hope to catch a bird this year.
Yeah.
Keep all your, keep all your people, I wanna echo the mayor, and appreciate your, your, and some, and just wanted to let you know that from my perspective, we made the right choice.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Let's hope for a boring rest of your career.
It's easier.
Thank you.
Okay, fine.
What about now, Waterman?
We wanted to ask you about some of the permits issued from the-
Well, uh, let's see. Yes, we did, we had a water leak at the Corner Bay in Randolph, which was the result of a, uh, overing blown out of the, uh, blown out of the valve down there. Uh, we're having a little trouble, uh, getting, uh, a replacement for it, uh, but I'm sure we will at some time. Right now, everybody still has, has water, it's all closed up, the road is closed up, although we still have barricaded, because, um, we were actually planning on going back in there today, but, um, the part that came was the wrong part, so we gotta, you know, go back through that process again. And yes, we have an issue at Plum Street Pump Station today, but that's been resolved also. So, you know, we, we've had issues, but we, uh, they're being taken care of.
I get to sound like a broken record, but it seems like every month now, the, uh, water production is less than the wastewater production, and, uh, this month, it's a million gallons. We, we processed a million gallons more wastewater than we produced water, so. I'm just, I, I don't understand how the numbers continue to get worse and worse unless something is seriously wrong, that we don't know is going wrong, or the numbers are not right. So, I just would ask that maybe you look back at this report in the last four or five months, and see that every month now, wastewater quantities exceed the water quantities, and particularly this month, a million gallons is a lot of water.
Right, decent.
Well, it, it is, but, uh, and, and there may be something going on that we don't know about, but I would say that, um, you know, the, the only logical answer that I have for it is just that the, uh, the I N I, you know, the inflating filtration from, uh, rainwater. I, I, I just don't know what else could be causing it.
That has to do with the manhole repair.
Unless, unless we do have, unless our, our, our figures are not right, and that's only possible. And they will be, you know, we, uh, calibrate the, the, this equipment annually, it will be calibrated, um, and so, you know, and that may well be the case, uh, and we'll find that out. Um, I suspect when the, when the weather dries up, you know, when we hit the, you know, spring and summer months, when it gets a little bit drier, I think you're gonna see that reverse.
And if it is all I N I, then we need to put some, some impetus on that manhole repair project.
I think manholes will give it-
I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve. I'm gonna make manholes, will we give them any big ones?
We're not finding many, they were, they've been out there for the last two days, going through them, and they'll probably finish up, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week. And we're just not finding a lot of, uh, uh, you know, water coming into the manholes.
Well, it's, it's hard.
So is there a possibility of coming in somewhere else?
It's coming somewhere, like Steve says, it's coming somewhere.
Could be from, could be from the groundwater level high?
Yeah, absolutely. We can help, because it's actually really-
The groundwater Cape Charles is extremely-
Yeah, higher that level gets, the more high pressure there is on these lines, and we do have, I mean, it's, it's coming in somewhere.
But, but you did find some, uh, some bad manholes.
We have found some, and we found one that's just a real gusher, and we're getting, yeah, we're gonna get it.
So, you know, that-
That's a lot of water.
They produce a lot of water, yeah, high water situation, so, uh, you know, even if it's all- it's only a handful of very bad manholes.
A million gallons?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess that brings us to the capital question, maybe that's. But, you know, when, you know, when, what's the schedule for the manholes and for some of these other things here?
We will be working on manholes this month and next month.
So you'll be able to finish them roughly by the end of?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think it's going to take us very long, I don't think we're going to find that, we don't have that many to do. I'm not going to, you know, my, my initial thought was to line all the manholes, I just didn't see the need, I just didn't see the need, I think we, we fix the ones that we, that we see are bad, and we use them for something else that needs to be done, because these manholes that are not leaking, are not leaking, I mean, they're, they're dry except they're down the bottom, the walls are dry, and some of them have small leaks where they generally go in in two pieces, the bottom part and then the top collar part that sits on top of it, and some of those have minor leaking around that, that will, you know, we'll recaulk that seam, and, but, I, these, these manholes are in good shape for the most part. Where we're seeing issues are in general of where the penetrations are, and then the worst one we've found so far is one down, the alleyway that comes down along, it's the alley just off of Bay Avenue on the first block, down at the corner of Bay and Mason, there's that alleyway that comes down behind those lots, and when they ran that line down there, they tapped into the manhole and did a real bad job of the, and the water just gushing out there. So that's the worst one we've found, and really the only one that, you know, any great customer.
Do you have a rough idea how much you're going to spend?
Yeah, I think we're going to get twenty thousand.
Good. I want to give you some accolades on your maintenance yard. Oh, your maintenance yard, it looks really nice, since I've been there.
Thanks, well, yeah, we wanted to grade that, I think it looked good, but we also cut a swale in that yard that has drained Vance's furniture shop out there, which was already taking a hit, and it's how it rains. It really looks nice. Thanks. Anybody, any questions?
I've got one more question, do you know anything about the clearing of the berm? When is that going to start, or do you know yet?
I think Giger said it's going to start in February. So it'd be pretty soon here. Last I talked to him, he hadn't gotten the permit, he was pissed up. Well, he told me February, but yeah, if he doesn't have the permits right yet, he knows what it'll be.
Did he get the contract?
Yeah, he has a contract. Yeah, speaking of permits, our water withdrawal permit is several months out evidently, I've just been talking to Hank Dino, and they're having some issues, so, you know, we may have to turn it off at some point.
Submit for the next time.
Yeah, submit for the next time.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, anything else we can, okay, that's all. Thank you. Jen, for you.
I don't know how you can add it, except I did want to add, we were asking how events get through to VTC, we can send everything we have to Alan, if anybody had to check out the website, and we then, he'll post your flyers.
Well, I, I just made that.
Right, but that leads me to something I want to, we really encourage all the organizations to send us their information as it comes through for their events. We were having to go out and commanders one of different websites to gather information, and that was leading to a lot of misinformation, so we just kind of made it our unofficial policy, we can't send anything to VTC unless it comes directly from the organization that we work at, and unfortunately, a lot of misinformation out there, so we just really encourage everybody to send us what they have, and they have it updated, and we'll update as you update, you know, if they do like little information about what's going on, so, we want everybody to be able to be as successful as we can, so people know out there is, marketing's, I think, a problem for everybody here, so we do what we can to help each other out.
Any questions? Hi, Jen. I think those are the department reports, I think the next is an item of bold business, public service authority wastewater update.
Right, this, this is just an informational item, at our separate meeting, the main item of business was the authorization from the chairman to amend the engineering contract with Herbert Prophet to do an evaluation of the Bayview wastewater treatment plant as a potential facility to process wastewater from the Southern Node project. That was requested by the board supervisors with a ten thousand dollar cap on that expenditure, so PSA board will be looking at those results to see whether the economics of that are consistent with the economics that were contained in the Southern Node P E R. The second item, the, we still have only had one meeting of the PSA subcommittee, the next meeting will be scheduled when the executive director finishes the draft of the agreement between Kate Charles and, and PSA. I spoke with her last week, Friday, and it's almost done, so hopefully that'll be scheduled shorter. That's all I have from PSA.
Any questions? All right, let's go on.
One of them, maybe, I'm studying, I didn't understand that it was a, that would have capacity to do additional, it, it does not. Well, it has backup, it has.
Or that it was even treating properly.
Well, it, it, it has some unutilized capacity now, it doesn't have the capacity to, to handle probably even existing flow from the proposed service area, and certainly not for hopefully larger flow from the continued development here. It would, it'd certainly have to be expanded, the drain field would have to be expanded, and you're absolutely right, it's a, it is not an advanced treatment plant, it does not do any neutral removal or anything like that, therefore, the, the drain field requirements are rather large, so it's, it's nothing like the technology that, that our plant incorporates. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next order of business is grounds maintenance contractor award.
The, the final extension on our, I think it was the two thousand and eleven contract, the grounds maintenance contract was last year, so we had to reach, re-advertise and get new bidders in, go through the bidding process. We went through that, and Eastern Shore lawn management was the low and the high bidder, and the, the, the numbers were, were pretty close to what he had, he had already been, actually, the lawn, the mowing was actually a little bit lower than he was the previous year, the Central Park is a little bit higher than last year, but they kind of, you know, took it out about the same. So, we're, we'd like to award that contract to Eastern Shore Lawn Maintenance.
Any questions, discussions? Is it a multi-year contract again?
Well, yeah, if we, we'll, if we both choose to extend the contract, we can, for I think, three years, I think that's what the, an additional three years.
Does this include the rental, rental or lease property we have at railroad park area?
No. That would be, we would have to add that.
If this was added, that's a good.
Right. And so, and we will add that to.
Any other questions, comments?
I have one, it's not directed at you, Dave, just, you have to be standing there. We seem to get a lot of one-bid contracts, you know, like the trash collection's always a one-bid contract, this is a one-bid contract, there's other contracts that nobody bids on, and is it us, or is it contractors, or is it a combination? Are we doing something? Is there something we can do to attract more bidders?
We can advertise it for a longer period of time, and go, and, and like contact these people, and, yeah, I mean, there's more that we could do to, to get more bidders. I'm sure there is.
I'd like to see us do that.
Right.
I mean, you know, because it could wind up saving us some money, I don't know.
Right. Well, now, let me just say this, there was, you know, Benjamin Lewis, Eastern Shore Lawn Maintenance, has been in this for several years, and the reason that he doesn't bid a lot of competition is it was a very reasonable move, the people that did this before him were paying them in excess of thirty thousand dollars, and I think it was, their contract was close to thirty-five thousand dollars a year just for the mowing, for getting the Central Park or anything. Eastern and Central Park and mowing were less than.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not complaining about the price, I'm just complaining about the fact that there doesn't seem to be any competition.
Well, I think, no, you would think that.
I'm not blaming the price on this contract.
It's, it's, it's pretty much across the board. As a matter of fact, in general, we advertise in the paper, but the people that actually bid on these, on these contracts, or the people that I call up and I say, hey, we just advertise for such and such, I want, you know, you need to bid on, and that's the way we do it.
I think, for the, for example, the HVAC central water, you, you contacted several potential bidders.
Right.
And you got one bid.
One bid. Eastern Shore had a little bidder too, so that's, I think that's an extra.
But that's, but that's with going out and saying, hey, we're, we're advertising.
Yeah, so.
Well, maybe it is, you can.
I hope so.
You know of other towns on the Eastern Shore that have this sort of?
Probably, I think it's just, I, I think it's just that people don't take the initiative to, to go out there and, you know, and look for work and do, and do that, I mean, I just, just my general observation, I mean, if you look at, yeah, I hate to carry this too far, but if you look at what happened in Bay Creek, that place was loon town for five years, every contractor over there, and I'm not going to say every, but ninety-nine percent of the contractors over there were from Virginia Beach, and not just the contractors, but the people that were on their crews, and anybody that wants a job can walk out to a place like that, and walk around, and go to, go to job sites and say, I need a job, and if he does that every day for three days, he'll have a job by the time he, you know, at the end of three days, he'll have a job. He's, they, I don't think, it's just, I think it's just Eastern Shore.
Okay.
All right.
I make a motion that we, and I'm not sure who's going to award this contract, is it the mayor going to award the contract? We award this grounds maintenance service contract to Eastern Shore Land State Management Corporation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What'd you say, gentlemen, is town manager, that's all.
The council actually awarded, but town manager, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? My contract will be awarded. The next one we have is the draft, let's skip one else. You want, you want to do, oh, no.
Yeah, let's, you can, you want to do?
Yeah, we do that, let's do that. Since you're there.
All right, Kevin, yeah, this is for the, this is for the HVAC, the heat, ventilation, and air conditioning for the second floor of the library, and once again, we had the high and low bidder were running the same, and that was Herbert's End Company, and the, the price falls relative to budget and leaves us ample money to get the electrical squared way, you know, to handle the, the heat and air conditioning units.
Have any questions for Dave with this?
Thank you. Is the electrical that's going to be part of this project just for the HVAC, or are you also, we have a?
We might throw a couple of outlets in upstairs too while we're at it. Yeah.
So we use it? Thank you.
Anything else? I have a motion to award the contract for installation of HVAC.
I'd like, like.
All in favor?
Aye.
Contract is awarded for the request. Thank you. And then the next item of business is going to be scheduling a public hearing regarding revised floodplain ordinance.
Yes, this is, this one's a little, little odd, the planning commission has been working on an update to the floodplain ordinance for almost a year now, Joe, something like that, and the, and we were under the impression that it all had to be done by May eighteenth, when the, when new firm became effective, and turns out that the state was giving us incorrect information on that, the ordinance has to be adopted by March second, and I found the whole thing kind of odd, because the planner had been working with the floodplain guru in the DCR the entire time, and I finally did have a chat with the gentleman after you received the great letter from FEMA, and, and he said, what letter? And then he looked in his file and said, oh, yeah, this guy's giving you guys the long data. So, that was kind of an interesting conversation. So, anyway, we, we, we kind of have to fast track this a little bit, because it's got to go through DCR, and then onto FEMA Region Three, and FEMA Region Three is, that's all Pennsylvania, and all kinds of communities in Pennsylvania that have to get these things approved. So, it, there's been a lot of back and forth on the floodplain ordinance, DCR had provided a model ordinance, and then the planning commission adopted, I think, most of those recommendations in the model ordinance, and even, I think Jeb had suggested some additional changes to it to make it a little bit more stringent, if you will. It's a key piece of the community rating system, and which, of course, benefits score on community rating system, they have a discount on, on flood insurance. And this is sort of an odd one too, because under the new firm, most of the town is out of floodplain, so there is very little that will be built in the floodplain, it's new, but certainly a new update to the maps, the floodplain could change it, so it does behoove us to have a good floodplain ordinance that will provide the discount of CRS. So, we do owe you a redline version, we haven't been able to find it yet, because we don't have a planner on it, but, but now we do, and we'll be working on that this week, find the redline version, which we'll distribute to all the council members and the planning commission, and so at this point, we're asking for permission to schedule a joint public hearing with the planning commission on February third, and then followed by a special meeting to adopt presumably the floodplain ordinance, so we can get it to DCR and to FEMA.
I'll make that motion.
Well, before we do that, we need to be sure we can have a form on February third. So, so by agree, if we vote for this, we're all agreeing that we can get there. February third is Tuesday. So, so Tuesday, February third, will anyone be able to make that, or most of you?
I'll be there.
All right. Good.
Everyone will be there.
Okay, obviously. So now, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion that we schedule a joint public hearing, and me and the planning commission. I'll make the motion that we schedule a joint public hearing and meeting with the planning commission in regard to the floodplain ordinance. Start on February 3rd.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We will schedule this joint public hearing, thank you. Next order of business is the Virginia Porta Guard A2 grants grant request.
Oh yeah, I have a year, Attorney General Senator Staff, first with the VPA, to only ask for authorized funds to continue for our hardware improvements. The date this year is February 20th, we'll work with that after this was written. This requires a letter from the mayor by March the 1st to officially ask for any requests. Last year, VPA approved $500,000 carryover for phase 3 of the offshore breakwater. It also approved another $75,000 for the shore breaks. The VPA also awarded a tank, $255,000 for a baby attenuator. That was for a tunnel project that was not authorized as such. Previously, VPA's policy, and this is the good news, their policy was $500,000 less, it was a 75%, 25% local match. Earlier this year, they passed, they updated their requirements. Now for any grants, it's 75% 25% match local. What we'd like to do is ask council to authorize the mayor to write a letter for a total amount of $830,000 carryover for the upcoming fiscal year 2015, 2016. This will be awarded July 1st if they authorize that money and then we will hopefully continue to operate our own.
Questions, comments?
Do you have any other expectations that they won't approve us?
For the most part, in 10 years, pretty much it's passed the board since I've been here, they really like Kate Charles because we spend their money most of the time. She's been slack for a couple of years, but they can back it up.
We haven't spent any lately.
Yeah.
The $255,000, is that available for use for offshore breakwaters?
For, yeah.
Well, not, let me, we'll be clear, not as it sits.
Right.
But it, we need to have them essentially, this proposal would restack that money. And they would pass a new motion at, was it the March meeting, the board meeting? Which would essentially cancel that project and rededicate that money as we.
They don't intend to fund that project, it was originally a project for attenuator of the Southport.
That's correct, right.
And that was going to be administered through the town and then they realized that they couldn't do that, is that correct?
That's correct. Well, the time, the time itself was awarding the money.
Right.
So that money.
But I mean, Southport understands that they can't use the money, they do, they do. So, but they do have to essentially make a new project list, which they incorporate into a resolution. And then they essentially reappropriate the money.
And that's pretty new money?
Nope, well.
That's funny.
Well, I mean, if the breakwater was worth $2 million or whatever, the latest price, $2.5 million.
We got to come up with 25% of whatever it is.
But if we don't come up with something soon, we're going to lose.
Well, I'd love to ask for a lot more, but they only, they only award a million bucks a year.
I get that too. Every $500,000 helps.
Right. Well, I think, I think, you know, we started spending some money here and there and I think we can go back. A lot of it was up before, before previously, we've only asked for $500,000. We know that VPA only gets a million, one or two million to play with every year of new money. So next year, we spend this, next year we can go back and ask for that.
But at this point, we don't have any plans to spend.
Well, we have, although we get these problems last year.
I get that, no, I mean, we're not, we're not making, we're not making any headway toward awarding a contract to build a breakwater or two breakwaters or a breakwater hatch or what if, anything.
And with that being said, and that's a good point, with that being said, they have, last year, before last year, did pull money back from our cabins. So that's something that we need to look at, how is it cleared by the council and the government what we're actually going to do and how we feel about doing it.
Can the premise expire?
Well, we're in the process now of, we're writing on our team of core engineers asking for an extension.
I will see, what were you, I just, and your certainties to the project, what are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we move forward on the breakwater contract of some nature that either has one with an option for a second one or all three with one with an option for two or something.
Can we do that without, you know, we do that without knowing we got the money?
Well, I don't know that we don't know that we don't have the money, you know, then we have a lower match, we have the money that we borrowed and well, we, we will be ready to address that in mid-year review. I mean, we have the estimate for phase 3 is, engineering estimate is $860,000, that's one, the plan. Smitty has some ideas on how possibly to bring that down with some, essentially acting, sound acting in general and doing a breakout. But our working estimate now is 860, that means it's a $215,000 match. So what we'll do is, obviously we're applying a trail project. The match this year for the trail project was out of the, out of new borrowing, we can restack that. Council wishes to move ahead, we have about a half million dollars left there, new borrowing is unallocated for the project certain. So the council certainly has options.
Okay, so not to belabor this, but because the issue in front of us is to authorize the mayor to send a letter for the carryover, but.
I wish we would need to review the contract.
I would like to get this on the agenda for the retreat or whatever it is, for the mid-year review, budget review as a, as a real item. And stop talking about it and let's do something about it.
I have a motion?
No.
You don't have a motion anymore? Make a motion? I told you I have a motion, we have a motion, I think we have a motion. Okay, I need a motion to authorize the mayor to send the letters to the VPA requesting the carryover, currently authorized grants. I got a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right, so next item of business is mayor and council comments. Joe, shall we start with you? Any comments, questions?
Happy New Year, not another one, and now we're second now for our fiscal year.
And it looks like we're doing well financially.
Yeah, we make things to be moving along nicely. And I thought the VPA was very nice to change their percentage match, that's a lot. I'm just going to eat, Chris, and remind everyone that the effigy party is a Saturday. If you're around and want to pop in, you want to help us set up at the firehouse, we'd love to have for a half hour or so. Otherwise, come join us Saturday night, bring your checkbook. That's it?
Not easy, what's going on in town so far? That's why I have to say it.
I think probably one of the best articles was in the Cooperative Magazine from the electric company about the town of Exmoor, town of Monterey. But the best was little towns in Virginia, or just little towns in general. If anybody's still got that, read it and you'll see how towns die and how towns live and grow. And I think Kate Charles, having been like a battleship over the past two years that survived, is really surviving. That's a fantastic article, the negativity, you know, that goes in small towns.
Anything else? Good. I agree with you, they were all very good articles. If you can get a copy of that magazine, I, all the guys can read it. I really don't have much, well, you know what, I'll go last, you guys go.
I am, I am in the meeting room.
That's great, I finished early. I really have nothing I'd want to talk about, we're going to have our budget review, that's going to be very important. Wish you all a happy new year and let's hope that everything continues to go up. I'm very encouraged by the direction town is going. Just a few announcements, tomorrow, the 16th, town offices are closed in observance of Lee Jackson Day. The 17th, as you heard, is the effigy party at the Kate Charles Firehouse. The 19th, the town offices are closed in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. then. 28th, that's B and L Day at the Capitol, January 28th. There is a town council work session at 6:00 PM on February 5th. The town offices are closed in observance of President's Day on February 16th. And the next regular town council meeting will be February 19th at 6:00 PM. So that's all.
Mr. Mayor, we have, we have two other meetings in February too, for the, there's the flood, there's the flood meeting for the 23rd. We also only have a meeting for our review.
It's January 6th.
That's January, Mr. Mayor.
But I mean, it's after this meeting, so. And I don't throw it on here and then. I don't know what time it is, well, yeah, those are executive sessions. There are 5:00, 7:00. Yeah, 4:45. I managed to mount the second.
Can I ask for clarification? February 5th meeting, the work session, this says 6:00 PM, my calendar says noon.
Yeah, we, they were supposed to, you know, if we were available on February 5th, or a retreat, mini-retreat, and it was a half-day session. I'll clarify that. I will clarify that, because you're right, it was a, it was a sort of lead to a war. Yep, it was. Anything else? I have a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Mr. Chair, thank you all for your advice.